It's 6:04. Let's get this meeting started. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for being late. That clock is slow. So we gotta let you start. Okay. Has everyone had the opportunity to go over that approved? And let's approve the minutes of the new member six regular meeting. Is there any discussion?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve through mic.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? So moved. Is there any mail?
We need to sign it.
Yeah. I'll pass it down. No mail. Okay. Do we have anything from the county attorney, Jeff?
Not yet.
Not yet. All right. On reports, committee reports to commissioners, Dale, would you like to give us a report on your meeting today?
Well, Sharon, I will if you can put up with it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. I'll report a few things to you tonight. Today's meeting, APC Director Bill McDaniel came in and announced his retirement at the end of 2026. Be aware that you, council has, I think rightly appropriated money for next year for a part-time position in his office. And this will be probably the best opportunity you'll have to get someone hired down there to take over when Bill leaves. He left open the possibility that he may leave even earlier than December 2026 if everything works out right. So a lot of things can go wrong or go right there. So he has made his decision official, so we're all on notice. We've got some changes to make in that office. And he's on the hunt right now to get someone hired as soon as possible. So as soon as he gets applicants, we'll go through the process and get that taken care of, hopefully sooner than later.
So is he taking applications?
Well, commissioners will be the ones actually taking the application. But Bill's taking care of the advertisement part.
Have you had any by put in for it?
Not yet.
It was just announced today.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Also, on the advice of Wade Balling, we decided today to withdraw our application for a brick grant for that proposed weather station up at the animal shelter. Seems that they've now wanted us to get an archaeological survey down of the area where it's going to set this thing. And it's only going to take a cement pad about two foot square. And to get the archaeological study done is over $6,500. Wade wasn't recommending we spend that kind of money on that. It was getting kind of ridiculous. So we've just backed off of it. I hate to see it turn out that way, but, you know, regulation, regulation, regulation. So you're not going to hear any more about that, I don't think. We did also approve a couple 144s today for our maintenance department. We've got two full-time positions open right now in that department. And Josh came in with 144s that we approved for the hire of Thomas Brewer and George Murray, Jr. There'll be two new maintenance personnel. Also, in the maintenance department, I don't like to report this, but Stephanie Glover has decided that she's going to leave our employ on December 20. Isn't that right, Jane? Be her last day?
Yes.
I think she said, yeah.
Sweet.
So December 20th will be Stephanie's last day here. So also, well, we heard a pretty good report from our recorder, Lisa Whip. She's here. I'll not give you a preview of what she's going to tell you tonight. I'll let Lisa speak for herself there. We gave approval for the sheriff to apply for another JAG grant for mobile radar units for the sheriff's department, if they say they need. And Surveyor Bill Mackey reported that the construction date for Bridge Number 32 that was going to be constructed in 2026 has been moved back. It'll now be a 2027 project. And also, on the subject of bridges, Bridge Number 75, just a quarter mile north of the four-way stop at Springersville on 450 East, will reopen to traffic tomorrow morning. The highway department will be removing the barriers out there tomorrow morning. So all the repairs on that bridge have been done. Also, we approved the, gave permission for the volunteer fire departments to pursue a FEMA grant for 800 megahertz radios for all three volunteer fire departments. They'll be making that application to the county's grant administrator, Joe Lisa Bates. And all the matching funds will come from the individual departments themselves. Also, we learned that we have been awarded $114,660 from the Indiana Department of Transportation for a grant that we applied for earlier in the year for eventual replacement of, replacement and upgrade of all of our traffic signs on the roads. So this first part of this grant award, the $114,000, will be used for the inventory and evaluation of our current signage and determine what all the needs for upgrades are. So that one had a pretty quick turnaround. And so we'll get started on that next year. And in the following year, we can actually apply for funds to do the actual sign replacements. So it had a great savings to the county because it's only 10% match to the counties to do the replacements. So that'll be worth quite a bit. Other than that, I don't have anything I need to talk about today unless you have something.
Do you have anything from the Eastern Indiana Regional Fire Commission?
No, I don't have anything to report from them. Our next meeting will be later this month. So I don't have anything to report from them.
Did you have a date on the women's facility?
I wish I did. It seemed like the main holdup here recently over there has been the access panels that go in the ceiling. There was some miscommunication between the general contractor and the supplier for those things. And we learned earlier in the month that there was going to be a four- to six-week lead time on those. And the facility cannot be opened or used until those are in place. So right now, that's what they're waiting on. When will they be here? When will they be installed? I don't know. Yeah, but we are getting close to the end on that project. I wish I could say, okay, we're going to be able to open up on this particular day. Right now, I would be afraid to make any real projection on that because if there's anything that can go wrong, it will.
Have you got bid finalized on the boiler for the courthouse?
Yes. As a matter of fact, we just learned, Josh, we just learned this morning, that the two boilers that we have ordered will be delivered either Friday of this week or Monday of next week. And then installation on both will begin immediately. Expect about, it'll probably take a couple of weeks to get them both in place.
Are we putting two in the courthouse or one for the jail?
Well, we bought one for the jail and one for the courthouse.
Okay. All right.
So both of them are supposed to be delivered either by the end of this week or the first of next week. So, and then the installation will take a few days.
Right.
And I hope that goes well. Be just in time, Bob. Anything else?
Question for you, and I don't want this to sound disrespectful to the commissioners, but who's been over watching the progress of the Women's Hercules? Has anybody been able to get on top of it, making sure that stuff is getting done? Because it's sure to seem like we're just watching. They just gotta run, do their own thing, dictating to us when they're going to get stuff done. There's a lack of follow-up. That's my assumption. And I don't mean it to sound getting disrespectful. That's just being blunt.
Well, that's what we hired DLZ to oversee that project. And they can only do so much. They can ride hard on the contractors, but they have no control over the supply chain for all these things that come up.
I made this warning before we even went to DLZ. When we signed with our QATW originally, I made this, I warned the county about this, DLZ. You got issues everywhere. They've worked with Rush County, other jails, delays, delays, delays. We're not building a friggin Taj Mahal over here. We're not requesting a custom grant from Italy, marble floors. It's simple materials, simple products to get this thing done. It's inexcusable that this thing has gone on this far in this long. How much are there going to cost overruns from what we were told?
We're not going to experience any cost overruns.
I sure hope that's the case because this is, I've never been projecting this long. It's a jail. It's a correctional facility. I don't know what materials we picked up and put in there, but they're not that hard to get. Other projects are getting done throughout the world. And yes, there was an issue with certain finishes and materials, yes. But again, we're talking high-end commercial buildings. We're not talking bad county women's correctional thing. And again, I'm just kind of frustrated. I'm sure a lot of us are, so you are. But I hope we never go to DLZ again.
Well, honestly, I can't blame DLZ for any of these delays. It's the very, it's the primary contractor and a number of subcontractors, and they all have their problems. I'm over there at least two or three times a week. I'm frustrated with the rate of progress, for sure, but that doesn't change their problems. And every one of them's got the wrong set of excuses why this went wrong or that went wrong.
You've had, I don't know, had excuses.
So, you know, it is what it is. We're really close to the finish line. We're just not quite there yet. Have you ever been over and went through this thing yet?
No, I haven't. I mean, I believe.
Well, you ought to go over and take a look at it. There's a million and one pieces to this whole puzzle.
I've worked on it for years. I'm sure I'll be dazzled by it. It's over there and the lost trace finishes and the contravention stuff. So I'll take a look. And I'm just sorry. There's excuses. Like, you know what? Everybody's got one.
Yeah.
Hey, I've been over there, Dale. What are you gonna do about the roofing or something over the gap between the buildings?
The gap in the building?
The gap between the two buildings.
Okay.
How are you gonna transport food and all that kind of stuff? There's no overhang or nothing?
Yeah. Well, the only canopy back there will be over the back door. And there will be fencing between there and the jail for security purposes. So, you know, we still have to backseamize in there to unload food supplies to the kitchen. So I don't think there's ever going to be a canopy over it. When this job was left, was there never a chargeback contract in the contract to meet the delivery date?
There's liquidated damages. There's provision for liquidated damages, I believe.
Well, we should add some high ones.
You know, jumping up and down doesn't hurry these people up. It just.
Sometimes it does.
Well, it certainly hasn't in this case. Anything else?
Want to compliment you on your glasses removed. They're all single women out there that are looking for something. He looks quite wealthy. He looks quite well now.
Uh-huh. Yeah. Well, I don't miss the eyeglasses. I'll say that. That's for sure. It's been the first time in a long time I've had 2020 vision again. So, and another thing, while I'm up here, I might as well mention this. Tonight will be Councilman Wolf's last meeting. And I want to thank Councilman Wolf for your contribution to all the affairs around here for the last four years. I appreciate your service. And I wish you well on your next adventure, whatever that may be. I don't know what it is yet, Dale. Lita will let me know. Okay.
Jim, I didn't realize you were involved in affairs around town.
Huh?
I didn't realize you were involved in affairs. You get it.
It wasn't.
You didn't hear.
Jim's waiting on a phone call from Donald Trump. He'll think he got a job for him.
Okay. Well, good seeing you all. Have a good, Merry Christmas.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Okay, moving on to transfers, additional and reductions. Additional appropriation to Huma the Bridge Fund 1135 to account 60102, Bridge Number 75.
Yeah, this money is basically to pay for the labor and the materials for what it's going to cost. I'm not sure. I haven't got any bills yet on the materials, but I've got the, on the labor part. But I'm hoping they all come in next couple of weeks so I get it paid for at the end of the year. So a lot of concrete and a lot of flowable fill and stone. So hopefully the rest of that'll cover. Not, I might be able to transfer a little bit out of something else. But that's mainly, like Dale said, it's open and closed since the middle of September. Our bridge inspectors did their inspection on it in the middle of September. Underneath the approach was washed out and probably had about a four-foot, three-to-four-foot void underneath. So they were afraid it might collapse to somebody. Not the bridge, just the approach. But, you know, you can't do that. So that's been an ongoing problem. I know probably 30 years ago, Goldman had, did a basic repair. And then 10 years ago, Sudoff did one. This time, I've done it to where it's not going to happen again. The whole problem is that watershed up in hydraulics on it is not, it's too big for what the opening of the bridge is. Back in '75 when they built it, it was right, probably right at the low end, enough to get fairly what they, you know, they built it with 1,500, 1,600 acres. A lot of it tiled now. There's so much water gets there. It don't take long to, that water to get up and get up under there. But it's not going to happen again now. So it'll get a last to the rest of bridges like that. That's why the additional.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Transfer in statewide 911 city share fund 4912 from account 30831 radio maintenance to account 10190 part-time in the amount of $1,900. Do we want to go ahead and?
Can you do all three of them at once?
Do all of them.
Transfer in statewide 911 city share fund 4912 from account 30311 liability insurance to account 10190 part-time in the amount of $4,500. And a transfer in statewide 911 city share fund 4912 from account 30522 spill and maintenance to account 10190 part-time in the amount of $5,000.
There's one more.
But that's a typo. I'm sorry. It's the same $1,900 repeated.
Hi.
Hi.
So towards the end of the year, I kind of had an oversight on the overtime and part-time budgetary line. So this is where it got me to. So I had to scramble up and do some transfers at the end of the year to finish up the years to pay. Something that I didn't like, but it happened. So here I am, getting all the money together to get everything paid.
What'd you say?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good job. Okay. Tim, did you second it?
I'm here, Kate.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? So approved.
And so while I'm up here, I, doing this transfer this time around, I want to let everybody know how appreciative this whole year you've been to me, my department. You do your due diligence and you make sure everything smooth, gets back to flowing smoothly. The other department that I want to really make notice of is Jane and Haley and Terry. Like I said, I just had a small oversight this year, something I don't usually do and I've never done on the budget. And those, Haley and Jane, they absolutely did wonderful with getting me through it and getting it all figured out after I had made that a little, like I said, not a mistake, but just I had an oversight. So it did upset me. But they, their office is absolutely a great office. They've done nothing but helped me. So I wanted to say at the end of this council meeting and at the end of the year, that thank you for tolerating me, each and every one of you, and for just continuing to support whenever anybody comes up here. You discuss, you try to figure out, and I wouldn't want your positions. And you try to make everybody happy, but sometimes that doesn't happen. And, but yet, we still have to go on. It's our job. So I thank you. Happy holidays. And I'm coming to the 18th party. I know everybody else is, so I'll see you then. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
And are we gonna, I'm gonna sit longer with this for later or what? I'm gonna go back to work. I gotta work.
Oh, yeah. You don't have to.
Okay.
Thanks, Kelly. Thank you, Kelly.
Bye, guys.
I did not pay her for that endorsement either.
No.
That's all I know.
There is no threat, babe. I already did that myself.
Well deserved, Jane.
Yes.
Yes, for sure. Very efficient. Transfer in courthouse operating fund 4903 from account 40651 property purchase land to account 30403 jail utilities in the amount of $10,000.
And that one's one we did on behalf of the maintenance department. Just, there's, jail utilities have been run higher than expected. And we knew we weren't going to actually purchase any land between now and the end of the year. So.
I make motion.
Okay. Someone second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? So moved. Transfer in highway local road and streets fund 1169 from account 40400 equipment to account number 30860 grant match in the amount of $50,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? So moved. Transfer in highway local road and streets fund 1169 from account 20330 by the minis. How do you say that?
To the minis.
Okay. To that. To account 30860 grant match in the amount of $35,275.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes?
Sure. The only reason I can, I can say is we've heard it for some of years. Finally learned how to say it.
Say it. Let me hear it.
The to the minis.
Okay. That. All right. So moved. Transfer in local emergency planning committee fund 1152 from account 30510 console and radio to account 40403 field equipment in the amount of $2,800.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? So moved. Transfer in jail lit fund 1233 from account 10132 jail officers to account 30071 medical services in the amount of $65,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Any ayes? So moved. Okay. Transfer in county general fund 1,000 soil and water from account 30303 other services to 20290 other supplies in the amount of $50.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes?
I'm not gonna say nay to 50 bucks.
So moved. Okay. Transfer in county general fund 1,000 veteran service officer from account 30110 for postage, $75, from account 30120 travel and training in the amount of $125, and from account 30211 printing for $44, to account 10106 veteran service officer in the amount of $244.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? So moved. Okay. In the 144s, straight court, Brandon Burgess.
Hello. Coming to request approval for a 144 for cost of living adjustment on the program coordinator's provision, my position. Before we started, I handed everybody a copy of Commissioner's letter of approval and the Department of Corrections and. and the Department of Corrections Advisory Board letter of approval for the cost of living adjustment. For the advisory board, I believe it was, you should see it as number seventeen on that list, Judge Corcola for coordinator position. The money comes out of project income for a grant that doesn't affect the grant money at all, and it's nothing. County general funds will be affected.
So let's see, the grant, it goes away, the money goes away, then it goes away for you too.
Correct. If I, if we lose the DOC grant, the CRRP grant, which covers everybody for what we're doing there, 'cause it's, community corrections is part of it, and we're part of it, probation and prosecutor's office. If we lose that grant, then yeah, all of that stuff would roll up too. My, my program is funded almost entirely out of that DOC grant.
In January, you would come in and ask for a raise then, too?
Uh, that was for last year's, the year before's COLI, I didn't, I didn't realize I had to come in with a one-forty-four. I didn't know how that worked, because I had the advisory board's approval and the commissioner's approval through all that. And so I didn't know that I had to get, I didn't know there was more to it, so I'm trying to get a little bit better at how to do it.
Since you're aware that it comes out of the grant, and if it goes away, that goes away for you too. I would imagine that we wouldn't be obligated to use the full four-thousand dollars if you chose not to, correct?
Well, we would.
We wouldn't be obligated to use the old four-thousand dollars out of the raise, correct?
Um, I don't know, I don't know exactly how that works. I know that our advisory board approved the four-thousand.
That's, but they don't make the final decision, we do?
I, I'm.
Jeff, what's, what's your take on that, Jane?
I mean, I don't think this is a legal decision. I don't think there's, there's not like a, there's not anything illegal about going one way or the other, but I mean, I.
That's what sometimes if you look at a grant, since, you know, we feel obligated to use entirety of the grant for that purpose of the raise, and I just wanna make sure what our options are.
I don't, I don't know what else you would use this grant for. So I mean, I, my assumption is, you use it all for your salary, or you lose it.
Are you alluding to now?
How did you come up with the four-thousand, the cost of living?
Uh, because I go straight across, so you know, if you on a.
How did you come up with four-thousand dollars?
Um, I just looked at the approximate adjustment for how inflation is basically in life here these last couple of years. I'm trying to catch up to it a little bit.
I'd like to hear what the council has to say, I mean, for me personally, I don't, if it's grant money and it can go away, I don't necessarily have an issue with it, it's grant money.
The raise technically isn't part of the grant, it would be coming out of his income, the, that, that department generates.
Yeah.
So it's fees. Like the grant will only pay up to, I believe it's thirty-five-eight-fifty, of your salary.
Thirty-five-eight-seventy-five is the maximum.
Okay, so thirty-five-eight-seventy-five, and then anything above that comes out of project income.
I think one of my issues is the raise will put him above jailers and road deputies. You guys looking on that?
Well, I mean, some days are just.
Yeah, I mean.
Corrections is some of the same situation, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think you answer, use that as the, the basic standard, I mean, be, be aware of it, but I don't know. Yeah, I'd like to hear more input from others.
On the salary. I type to the salary, one of us, I have the assumption.
Nobody got anything?
I assume to three, like everybody else. So no matter what, you know, it's not three, I'll have to read it.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other comments that people wanna make?
I just think it's a bit much for the position.
I guess my reasoning on it is if the money is there, and even if it's the thirty, what was it, thirty-eight, fifty, thirty-eight-seventy-five?
Uh, the, the amount that's paid out by the grant?
Yeah.
Uh, thirty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five.
Okay.
About the cost of county general.
Right, right.
All right, well, I think it's a little much to, I mean. For the position, nothing personal.
Right.
Nothing personal, it's just about the position.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Well, let's see, I'll make a motion to approve.
You make a motion to approve?
Yep.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I'll do roll call.
One do roll call, okay.
For the, I just, I, I would do up to the thirty-five-eight-seventy-five.
Okay, he is currently making forty-six thousand, he's asking to go to fifty.
Yeah, I agree with my motion.
Okay, well, you just said the thirty-eight, I'm making sure you understand.
I meant, I meant the thirty, the three-thousand-eight-hundred, it was, what did you say?
He's asking for a four-thousand dollar increase.
And I was saying less than that.
That's your motion, okay. So then a roll call, but Winter?
Yes.
Riker, Peyton.
With three-thousand-five-hundred and what?
No, no, you're, you've misunderstood, what he said was the thirty-five-thousand-eight-seventy-five came from the grant. He makes forty-six, so.
What, what?
Over above the thirty-five-eight-seventy-five is coming from project income, correct?
Of course, I'll say thirty-five-hundred.
So his motion is thirty-five-hundred?
He's, he's everybody.
Bob, do you still second that?
Do you still second a, a raise of thirty-five-hundred?
Sorry about that.
Okay, so then a roll call, but Winter?
Yes.
Riker, Peyton?
No.
Patterson?
No.
Wolf?
No.
Bevington?
No.
Stewart?
Yes.
Cranfield?
Yes.
Doesn't want to close another dollar off?
No, no, yeah, I said four noes and three yeses, so that failed.
Motion to approve three thousand.
How much?
Three thousand.
Okay.
Only once.
Second.
Okay, and a roll call again, Winter?
Yes.
Riker, Peyton?
No.
Patterson?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bevington?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
And Cranfield?
Yes.
Okay, so that passed.
I have no idea what just happened.
You just got a three-thousand dollar raise.
Not four thousand. Uh, you want some, you lose some. What do you mind me to do?
Nothing else.
One-forty-four here.
That's okay, they'll, they'll pass the salary ordinance later, and it'll be on there.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brandon. Okay, old business. Okay, moving on to new business, the APC reappointment of Gary Nayler.
He asked me to pass something along that he wanted to be reappointed. He asked me to.
I've talked to him, I was getting ready to say that.
What's that?
I talked with Gary, and Gary would like to be reappointed, and to my knowledge, there's been no one else that has inquired about that position, and so I was, I told him I would bring that before the council.
Officially, we can't do anything until after the first of the year, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
His appointment expires December thirty-first.
December thirty-first, yeah. So he would need to be reappointed.
I'll make a motion.
I, I've been on the area planning for four years. He's the one that proposed a twenty-thousand hog operation within a half mile of the city limits. He got it pushed out to a mile. He was gonna put them within a quarter mile of our subdivisions, I pushed it out a half mile. I've not seen anything to increase our budget or to help this council, but that's the only one who wants the job.
How many, how many meeting meetings have you attended in the year's time this past year at APC?
He is on, you're appointing him to the APC, and I've been on.
I'm asking you, how many times did you go to APC meetings this year?
In fairness to Bob, I think that he was a little.
When I wasn't in the hospital, I've been there about six or three times. This was last year I'm talking about, and I was.
This year, twenty-twenty-four? The reason I'm asking is because some of the people there were asking why you haven't been lately.
Well, it's not like I didn't have an excuse.
I'm just passing along.
But I'll do my best, Kate, to be there twelve times next year, if you want me there.
I'm just passing along a question that was asked of me.
Pardon me?
I'm just passing along a question that was asked of me.
With the appointment of Gary Nayler.
This is an appointment, not an election.
I don't, yeah, I don't know why that question was asked, I mean, it doesn't matter how many times Bob has been to a meeting, it should, I mean, we're here to reappoint Gary Nayler, not, not ask Bob how many meetings he's been to, that's irrelevant.
So I mean, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays?
Aye.
No.
Two nays.
I was gonna say, was that five, too?
Okay.
Councilman Wolf and Councilman Stewart, nay, everybody else can.
Oh, it's staying.
Let's, let's do a roll call then.
Yeah. Yeah, do a roll call.
Okay, Winter?
Yes.
Riker, Peyton?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Wolf?
No.
Bevington?
It's staying.
Stewart?
No.
Okay, and Cranfield?
Yes.
So that passes, five in favor. No, four in favor, two against, one in stench. Lord.
So it's a very good.
Yes, it passes.
Okay, proposed ordinance, uh, twenty-twenty-four dash ten, approving recorder's statement regarding perpetuation fund for twenty-twenty-five. Do all these go together here? The starting part-time.
No, hers is a separate one based on this statement, which we, oh.
Okay.
I would only make a motion to approve the one that we've sent up, the one that was sent to us.
Okay.
Look, a motion to approve the one that he sent, not the one that was sent to us.
Okay, I think it needs to be understood, and I'm, and I have Deftie, and she's from Wayne County's Recorder's Office, she's been with them for forty-five years, that it's the recorder's job to prepare the sworn statement, not the council's.
It's our job, we can also just, we, we, we don't wanna help the council and the county with your perpetuation fund. We're prepared to remove the deputy, your deputy, first deputy, and knock the hours down there.
Mike, I am helping the county.
You're not.
Yes, I am.
Do you think for a minute that if you came here and you said I'd give more money for my project, that we couldn't take money out of a rainy day fund and help you? Do you think that for a minute we would deny that?
She's just trying to get. I have a job to protect that fund and the records of the county.
Yep.
When Lisa took on that position, she took on a mess, because those records are way behind, being scanned and.
Yeah, there were people hired for that, they're trained for that.
And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna give you what we've done this year, if you will entertain me for a minute, okay? So last year, we had two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-seven documents, okay? This year, as of date, we have done two-thousand-ninety-nine documents. So in two years, we will have done four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-six documents. We are on track to do five-thousand in two years. That's a lot. But I can't do it all.
We, we understand that, and again, I better go back to what I just told you. If you think for a minute we let you high and dry and not give you money for your services to be done.
But I don't know that, I mean, like, what happens if you owe more money for the jail? The people of Fayette County have a right to have their property records protected.
What do we have on a rainy day fund, Kate, Jane?
Turn a half million?
You think we're gonna burn turn a half million?
I don't know.
It's been sitting there for, we just put a million, a million in there this year.
But if we have that much in a rainy day, then why do we even need the money from perpetuation?
Because the rainy day fund is there for emergencies such as.
This is an emergency situation, like all, if the building were to burn tonight, if the building were to burn tonight, all of your records are gone. So the proof that you have, that you own your property, because you're homeowner, is gone. If the building were to burn tonight.
Well, I understand, I'm willing, if you want to sign, you can sign, but you're gonna lose your deputy.
I'm willing to give you a sworn statement.
Yep, and you're, you're dictating to the committee council.
I am dictating that this is the last year until records are done.
All right, here's, here's what I'm gonna say. I have found, um, this sworn statement that you provided to be completely unacceptable. I'm not sure when it became the recorder's duty to dictate to a county council what it will and won't do in the future. And if you look at that perpetuation fund, okay? You, we could do what we planned to do this year and next year, and still do the first two phases of your project in that perpetuation fund and not run out of money.
No, Scott, you can't.
No, you won't run out of money, that's what I'm saying. Jane, will you hit the Excel spreadsheet, please?
Perpetuation funds.
Hang on a minute, let's look up here at the Excel spreadsheet, please. Down at the bottom.
Yeah, I'm trying.
All right.
I don't do good with the little circly pad thing.
So what you've got in front of you is the fund year-ending balances for that perpetuation fund. And for those at home, just so everybody's aware, the perpetuation fund is the user fees collected from those who use the recorder's office services. So in twenty-nineteen, that was, that one-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-one-seventy-nine was the year-end balance, all the way across. So the five-year average year-end balance has been one-hundred-seventy-thousand-two-fifty-two. As of yesterday, I'm projecting that that fund at the end of twenty-twenty-four will have a hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars in it, which is more than three out of the last five years. Now, if you look at the annual incomes over the last five years, okay? It's averaged fifty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-nine dollars and sixty cents. We're on pace to collect fifty-three-thousand-six-hundred, which is, what, uh, more than three out of the last five years. And if you look at the annual expenditures, the five-year average has been forty-five-thousand-seven-seventy-two. Now, we're on pace this year to do eighty-thousand-nine-twenty-eight. Part of that is what, you know, what we did, but part of it is also the thirty-eight-thousand-three-eighty that is out of unappropriated expenditures that you can spend out of there, okay? Jane, un, unhide those, those, uh, columns.
Where, where is it?
View.
Oh, here we go.
Oh, there you go. Unhide. Columns. H and Q. There you go. G and R.
Just, don't eat it. Where in the heck? I should make you come over here and control the thing.
You're on X.
I know, I don't know how that happened. Seriously, this is not like my computer in my office.
Go down to the bottom.
There.
Put the bottom on the right, slide it over.
I can't. Okay. I'm telling it to arrow over. Use that, yeah.
Yeah.
Shit, okay. I don't, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know how to make that.
Okay, well.
You can close Z. Jane, you can close Z.
Why don't you come do this, you're better at computers, hit what, control?
Control Z.
Control Z.
Or the back arrow.
Control Z again.
Okay. And what do I need to do here to unhide?
Highlight G and R, just G and R.
Okay.
Highlight, just G and R.
Just G and R, okay.
Now, unhide.
I feel like an idiot, and I'm on camera.
You're all right.
You're doing all right. I bet he's got it just at the screen, so nothing on camera did.
Yep. I got the frame for it.
You just hit the.
What did I do, I told it?
You hit hide, twice unhide.
Oh, format. Unhide columns.
There you go.
Well, well done.
And to make this smaller, do you want me to unhide the rose too while I'm standing here?
No, not yet.
Oh, God. I have to come back.
Well, unfortunately, that's hard to see, but if you look at the first two, if you look at all the phases of what you wanna do, the cost is gonna be over a half million dollars.
Yes.
Right? So if you look at phases one and two, a hundred and four, that covers eighteen-eighty-one to nineteen-seventy-nine D and mortgage books, and phase two, in eighteen-sixteen to nineteen-ninety-six index books. Now, make, do you have somebody from that company? Now, Ma, do you have somebody from that company here?
I have Dusty Wicker with CSI, he has worked with that company.
Good, oh, he's worked with them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm the vendor for the Recorder's Office.
Okay, so let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
If the degradation of the files is what we're concerned about, why are we, and that degradation comes from the age of the documents, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so why would we prioritize based on what the documents are versus the age of the documents? You see what I mean? Why would we prioritize index books and then deeds and mortgages? Or, you know, instead of, say, eighteen sixteen through seventy-nine, eighteen eighty to nineteen thirty-nine, nineteen forty to two thousand two? If, if the timeline is what's causing the, the degradation here, wouldn't we go after the oldest documents first?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
And the reason for that is because the older that the records are, they aren't as needed, they aren't as necessary.
Okay.
So, you know, property that's more current is what your title searchers, your abstracters, the general public are actually looking for.
So if we lose part of it, say, the eighteen sixteen?
By, by statute, we have to maintain all for the lifetime.
But that's not the most important.
So we're gonna, so we're gonna prioritize, you know, based on what it is, right?
Typically, yes.
Okay, okay.
Typically, the most important is deeds and conveyances.
Okay, so that would be the first one you'd go after?
That.
Phase two, right?
Phase two would probably be, yeah, what I would go after.
Hence the reason I, hence the reason I asked for deeds.
All right, fair enough. Thank you, sir.
Are you doing phase one right now, Lisa?
I'm sorry?
You doing phase one right now?
I, I'm doing military and flats right now, I'm not doing any of this.
Okay.
Yeah, she's, and that's being handled in-house, you know, without a third party.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
And you're not getting, and you're not getting pristine copies, like, we need to keep that out there.
Okay, so thank, thank you, I appreciate that. I, I've got all I need from you.
Okay.
Can you go back to, to where you were and then unhide the rows?
Ctrl Z. Just remember that.
Highlight twelve through twenty-four. There you go. Now, you're gonna have to move that over a little bit. So your projected January one, twenty twenty-five balance is gonna be about a hundred and sixty-three thousand. If you add in the average five-year income for that fund and subtract out what we wanna do with it, you get a cert, you get a subtotal, and I can't read that, that number. But then let, take out phase two of that, your projected twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five balance in that account is forty-seven thousand five hundred forty-four dollars. Now, let's go to twenty twenty-six, you add in the five-year average income, you take out, say, a little bit more than what we're, what we budgeted for in that fund this year, and then you add in the phase one cost, by the end of the year, that fund will still have twelve thousand dollars in it. You can do two phases of this project, still do what we need to get done and not run out of money.
Okay, can, can I, can I bring Dusty back up? So that fund, when, when that fund was established, and you know a lot about that fund as well, if, if I were to actually replace all of my equipment, I, I can do that, right? And is twelve thousand dollars gonna get it?
Twelve thousand dollars won't even get you a server, you're looking at twenty, twenty-five thousand for a server.
So how bad is your equipment?
Um, equipment was installed in twenty nineteen, um, was when the fore, administration switched to our system, so you're, you're looking at, close, you're getting close to seven, eight years.
So how much to replace the equipment?
That I don't know, um, it changes every day.
Is the server coming from you?
The server can come from us, or it can come from your IT. Yeah, we can provide specs for a server, um, we just got one, maybe we just got you one, how much was that, do you remember? It was over twenty thousand dollars, and that was at the end of last year that we installed it in Wayne County.
And that was just the server, right?
That was just a server, correct. So then you've got workstations, um, and you've got, what, one, two, three?
Three up front that we work on.
Three up front, you've got scanners, scanners around about fifteen hundred apiece, um, you're working with two, um.
Microfilm?
Microfilm.
Microfilm, yeah. So, and that's, that's where it becomes tricky, because you've gotta have enough in the perpetuation fund to be able, be able to recover from something if it does happen.
But it could always be done in additional appropriation if all hell breaks loose.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, so it doesn't have to come from the perpetuation.
It doesn't have to, but, but when this, when this was put in place, this was to ensure that that money would be there. The state thought enough of the Recorder's Office, they said, hey, we're gonna make them the first office by constitution, we're gonna give them this fund, we're gonna give the recorder the responsibility to make sure the money is being used the way it's supposed to be being used.
Well, it is not unusual for communities throughout Indiana to subsidize the cost of administering a Recorder's Office through the use of a perpetuation fund. It's legal, it's common, there are communities better off than us that use a, use the user fees to pay a hundred percent of the administration costs of, of the Recorder's Office. So this isn't anything unusual.
And that, that, don't get me wrong, I, I'm not diminishing what you're trying to do, but you're, it's very important what you're doing, I, I agree with you. What I want you to understand is I feel like there's, have you been a clerk, been a recorder now? Has the council ever not given you what you needed, money-wise? Have we ever left you alone?
Mike, I don't ask for a lot of money.
My question was, have we ever left you alone?
No, but I don't ask for a lot of money.
That's not the point. We have money set aside for this purpose, for something that makes.
So when I come to you in January and want a half a million dollars, you're ready to cough it up?
If you, if you can prove that you have a need for it?
You have a need for it because right now, we're, we're very behind. Wayne County is working on the eighteen hundreds. Rush County is currently indexing nineteen fifty-two. Henry County, everything has been digitized, they are waiting to upload, and then they will be indexing in-house, which we would be doing as well. Hancock County, their deeds are scanned and indexed back to eighteen twenty-eight, the beginning of their county. All their documents are indexed and scanned nineteen sixty-nine to current. Union County, they're working on nineteen seventy-six, now they're a lot smaller than us. And then Franklin County is all the way back to eighteen sixty-nine, and we are sitting in the mid-nineties.
So I don't, I guess I don't understand what you're saying, why, why you need a half a million in January?
It's gonna take a year to get it done, it's time to get it done.
So we're paying upfront for a service that's not, we're paying upfront for something that, instead of?
We wanna make sure the money is there. I gotta make sure the money is there to pay that, and I gotta make sure the money is there, if something happened to the equipment, it would be taken care of.
I guess we're still talking, we, we didn't take this.
You know, and we.
Forty thousand out of your perpetuation fund, whatever, whatever the exact amount is, you still don't have a half a million.
I still don't have it all, right, but that's growing, and that's why I want to say, I'm gonna give you forty thousand dollars, because right now, I'm already putting, let's see here.
I think you lost a bad taste in our mouth with, with the way that the language was in the, your, your, what you sent to us.
I don't blame her for it, because she's just trying to secure.
Oh, we know the relationship there between you two.
We put, the Recorder's Office put forty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-nine cents into the county general as of Jan, or December twenty-third of last year. Now, let's look at this year. As of November thirtieth, in the county general, we've put forty-four thousand one hundred and one dollars. Elected officials training, we put three thousand ninety-five dollars. Surveyors perpetuation, we put fifteen thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars. We're, we're giving more out than we're even gonna bring in, because as of November thirtieth, in Recorder's perpetuation, we've only taken in forty-nine thousand twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents. But we're giving money, like, we're already helping, the recorder is doing our part. We're doing our part.
I'm not sure how, it, it seems to me that if, if, the perpetuation fund is user fees, so I'm, I'm not sure, for every dollar that we're able to cover the administrative costs of the Recorder's Office through user fees, that lessens the burden on the taxpayers that don't use those services. And I'm not sure how that's a bad thing, because I think the way you wanna do it, not only do they get hit, but the people, the user, the people who pay those user fees are getting hit twice, because they're not only paying the user fees, they're getting hit harder, the user fees don't go down, they're getting hit harder.
Scott, I don't write the rules, I didn't write the statute, I'm just trying to go by what the statute is telling me to do.
And the statute allows councils to do what we're trying to get done.
If, if, Dad, would you please, please help me out here?
Now, listen, I'm sure that, that, you're, you're a very nice lady, and you're from Wayne County, and, and God bless you for coming down, but, um, Wayne County is Wayne County, and you can't compare it to here.
I, I love a speaker piece.
And you saw.
Yeah, so just as a, as a little bit of background for Debbie, um, she's been in the Recorder's Office in Wayne County for forty-five years. She helped write the legislation for this specific issue.
Okay.
So that's why we felt it was important for her to be part of this.
Let her speak.
Yeah, I, I, I've gone to some other counties too, because the councils don't understand what the perpetuation is for, the, the record perpetuation is for. They created that fund to preserve our records. It wasn't for salaries, it wasn't for anything else, it was to preserve our records. It got to the point where some of the smaller counties didn't have enough money to pay their employees, so they saw this fund growing, and it cost a lot of money to preserve these records. And so we let it grow a little bit until we have the money to pay the half a million dollars to preserve the records. So, um, we created this affidavit that made a recorder swear to the fact that they had their records all digitized, that they have their records preserved, and that all the records are taken care of, then the excess can be used for salaries, or whatever the council needs to use it for. Right now, she can't swear to those facts because she's, her records are not preserved. Apparently, in the past, the recorders weren't putting that as a priority, and that is a recorder's first priority, is to make sure those records are archived, so that if there is a disaster, you've got backups other places besides this building.
Ma'am, I do appreciate you coming down, but what, what, so when legislation is originally created, there's always a specific intent, right? And if something happens where a practice begins that was never intended, legislation is normally changed to keep that from happening.
That's what we did.
Well, with the sworn statement, that's true, but communities throughout Indiana still do this, this is not.
Because there's an excess.
This is not a common thing, and what, this is, this is not an uncommon thing. So, and what you might not understand is that we're one of the poorest communities in Indiana.
I get that. I, I've talked to some other ones.
We are, we are probably eighty-eighth, eighty-ninth of ninety-two counties.
Yeah, I understand.
And our people are getting hit like crazy, and for this recorder to, to put a sworn statement in front of us dictating what we will and won't do in the future, I find offensive. And anybody who doesn't find it offensive that's on this council, I, I, I question their competence. Now, I'm willing to work with this, the recorder, to try to work something out, but that sworn statement's ridiculous. I wanna ask our county attorney, as that sworn statement is written, do you recommend we accept it?
Based on what you've heard today? And I, and I do wanna note, there are seventeen of ninety-two counties paying for their chief deputy, which is who you guys want to pay, out of records perpetuation, okay? There are twenty of ninety-two did not reply to the survey that we were given at Recorder's Conference. Fifty-four of ninety-two, the first deputy's pay is coming from the general fund. I would venture to say your counties that are paying for, for all of this probably are digitized.
And, and my included, all my employees are paid out of perpetuation, except the chief deputy and the recorder, and I have all my back, I, I have all my records preserved, now we're working on digitization, and we're back into the eighteen hundreds, but that's, that's why I can have the perpetuation paying my employees, because I've already gotten the back stuff done.
And at this point, I'm willing to help you, but I'm just saying, we cannot continue to take from this, we've got to get this done, and that's why I have to put stipulations in there.
I agree with you in two years, not today.
If the building burns tonight.
That is something, that is something to, to be, to be said.
This goes back, you know, Dale and I, we, we first, our council together, we did this to get us through rough patches, and it was never intended to be a long-term solution, it was meant to be, give us a, a helpful, difficult spot. That place has been, so we've now, we've now gone in the, the, the record perpetuation fund on a continual basis, it's gonna get in rough spots, we've gone through the clerk's office, you were there. It's meant to be a short-term Band-Aid, that's it, never intended to be multiple, multiple years, it's a, it's a year-to-year basis.
Right, we did this last year, though, and we're doing it this year, like, at what point in time do we prioritize our records?
When our, when our income starts, we start getting more income from something, that's, that's what's hurting us. We don't have the income to cover everything in county general, this little bit is what allowed, is, continues to be hitting pay raises for the rest of the county. You can make faces back to all you want.
Yeah, I will, because you're talking about my job.
Listen, listen, listen.
You're right.
You're talking about my job.
Yep.
Not yours, not yours, not yours, mine.
Listen, we're gonna be civilized.
That's out of order.
We're gonna disagree, but we're gonna survive.
Really?
Yeah.
Come on, let's go take a walk.
Nope, I'm just staying right here, and I'll keep my mouth shut.
I do wanna go back just for a second, and, and, you know, I have no dog in this fight, okay? I mean, I, um, respect what all of you do, I come from county government myself, so I understand all of this, okay? Going back to the, you know, if there is a natural disaster, your microfilm that you have is here, all of your original records are here, if you have a disaster, it's all gone, all of it. The only thing you will have is going back to nineteen ninety-four, everything prior to that will be gone. This happened in Jefferson County in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, they had a courthouse fire, they lost everything. If it wasn't for, um, the fire creating the damage, the water destroyed everything else. So I'm sure we all in this room own property, imagine trying to prove that it's yours. You've gotta have that proof, and that proof is in that building, that office.
I'll go back to your job, nobody wants to take your job, nobody wants to take your job, I'm presenting the other side of the card here.
But why is it that I'm?
We just presented this side, I'm presenting, as a council, what we can do, so it's not a game we wanna play, we wanna work together to get this done, nobody wants to remove your job.
But why are you threatening it?
Because you got, it's gotta be set, it's gotta be laid out there.
But, but why, but why are you throwing out threats?
It's not, it's not a threat.
But it is a threat, because if, if she doesn't.
It's what the council's doing, we have a final responsibility.
But if she doesn't play your game.
No.
I'm the one that loses.
We didn't command her and demands to her in, for future stipulations, we never said, this is gonna be a perpetuity.
Yes, you did have.
No, we have not.
Yes.
Yeah, well, what have you said, what have you said in a budget meeting?
I, never mind.
You've never been in a budget meeting, have you?
No.
Okay, so you can't speak to us?
Yeah. I won't speak, but, yeah.
I, I come back to, to Jeff. I come back to Jeff. Given what you've heard tonight, would you recommend that this council accept that sworn statement as it was presented?
So, the problem I have with the sworn statement is adding conditions that effectively take away options from future councils.
Just, just until it's digitized.
Right. But the discussion we're having tonight is, what happens if tomorrow, if they, if they, if they play ball with what you're saying, tomorrow, there's a flood, there's a fire, records are gone. No. I know, but you're making it sound as if they're, but for their actions, you're, you're safe and you're protected. That's not the case. And I don't know how many years, I don't know how many phases we would go on, but if they don't help you out, the fact is, you're going to go 10 years, 15 years before you get through these phases?
But if we, but if we can take...
My, my concern is this, my concern is this, and here's what I will tell you. I know for a fact the commissioners hold the idea of getting these records updated and computerized extremely important. I know this council does. The thing I find silly about all of this, to be quite frank, is that the only way this Phase 6, all these phases happen in a decent amount of time, is if these folks are on board with it. Because you're going to get it at County General, you're not going to get, by my math, what I was doing, you're looking at what, another seven or eight years before you could even come close to get it done?
Yeah.
I'm guessing you want to have it done quicker than that?
I wanted it done quicker than that.
The only way that's possible is with these folks.
But if that, but if that money were to dry up, if we didn't have two and a half million?
You're, you're, you're saying that you're not going to get it done for 10 years, 12 years? You're not going to get it done in a decent amount of time without these folks giving you money.
And I understand that.
My assumption is, if we played ball and everybody kind of agreed and we talked about this calmly and we had discussions, and, and we did, my assumption is you'd end up getting that from these folks. But the problem I have that I keep coming back to, I don't sit in budget hearings, so I don't know what was said. The problem I have right now that I'm sitting here is, we're at the, we're at the 11th hour, and it was my understanding that budget, we said, yeah, not a problem.
In September, I was...
And now, all of a sudden, I know, now, all of a sudden, we've changed our mind and we're, we're playing it until, we're trying to play the game till January. That's what the council has a problem with.
When that budget...
Also, trying to put in language that dictates how a council can use their fiscal options in the future, I'm never going to be able to look at a council and tell them to sign something that says you are, somebody else is dictating to you what fiscal options you have in the future. That's not, that's, because if, if they don't help you out, if they don't help you out, you're looking at, by my math, at least a decade, right? So, you're not just telling these folks, you're telling the folks that get elected after them, the folks that get elected after them, that they will not be able to have any options when it comes to this. So, that is my concern with your, with your as-proposed offer. That, that's just to be honest with you. Now, do I think that, do I think that they want to do it next year? I don't. And I think next year, you should probably start having talks, March, April, May, summer, and I think we can probably get it to where they won't do that again. In fact, I think they're probably going to get to a point where they say, commissioners are going to come to them, they're going to say, man, we'd really like to get these phases going, how can we, how can we make more money happen? This was a fiscal option for them to use this year on a very, on a very extremely tight budget, they're using it.
But you have to understand where I'm coming from.
We do.
We do.
But I don't, but I don't feel like you do.
I don't think you guys, she's got so many things, don't...
I took it...
But, but, but let me tell you why I think you're wrong in this regard, is for you to say, and I apologize, for you, for you, for you to say that they're not, they have given you part-time employees this year, they have given you funding to, to be able to just do this kind of data entry, correct?
The Recorder's Office has funding to do that.
No, no.
Like, we're paying that from records perpetuation, the two part-time.
Okay.
And I'm paying, and I'm paying Bev from records perpetuation. The only, the only person being paid from General right now is me.
But they approved those people being hired, correct?
Yeah, the commissioners did. And we've done, and we've, and we've done a lot. We have done a lot, and we're trying to move forward, but, you know, I mean, just like Sharon had asked me, so, after, after digitization, do we get rid of those people? No, because there's more than just one, like, it doesn't stop at digitizing, that it has to be indexed, it has to be validated.
So, you're saying that comes, their, their salaries are coming from this too, and that's why there's this big jump? Okay, so, well, then what you're saying, so what you're telling me then is, without their assistance, you're talking 15, 20 years before you're, before you're caught up?
Right now, I'm taking, like, right now, the only person that's being paid is me.
That's, that's, I guess that's where I have the issue with, I, I guess that's where I'm having a problem with having my council, I'm a representative of it.
I understand that.
Having them sign a document that handstreams three, four councils from now? I mean, we're talking three, four terms, five terms?
Because at least you're got, you're going to only have like more, possibly one more term. That's four years. So, when you're gone, the next recorder may or may not have the same ambition that desires you. I commend you for what you're doing, I do.
If they don't have the desire to do that, then they're not doing what statute says they're supposed to do.
You and I can't control that.
You're right, I can't.
But that affidavit's only supposed to only be for one year.
Yeah, the affidavit's for one year.
Yeah, but you made it a different kind of one-year deal. You made it a lifetime deal.
I haven't seen it.
That's, the last two sentences...
I stated, I will read it, if you don't mind. Pursuant to Indiana Code, this request is made solely for the 2025 calendar year. Recorder states this will be the final time a sworn statement will be issued to Fayette County Council for the purpose of salary until all records have been fully digitized in Fayette County Recorder's Office. And then I noted, council acknowledges when they accept those terms when creating an ordinance.
It's those two sentences I got a problem with.
I'm just saying, we, we want to know, everything is going to be digitized.
You are handstreaming future councils, and we can't do that.
But how long is it going to digitize everything?
I mean, like, if, if I come in and I give you guys X amount of dollars, and you come in and say, you know what, we're going to come up on the end and we're going to take care of the rest of it, Lisa, because you don't have it, then we're going to say, okay, that's done. And at that point in time...
But Lisa, you created a, let's, we're not talking about the money as much as, the issue they have, they're not wanting you to commit to four or five years of this.
I don't want to commit to four or five years.
But listen, you created a unilateral contract in this regard. You said, I'm going to give you my sworn statement, which is your, your authority to do, correct? But you said, I'm going to give it to you and you're entering into a contract with it. And the real bad part about that is these folks can't enter into a contract.
Until we're done.
No, no, they can't enter into a contract, period. The commissioners have the authority to enter into contracts, not them. So, so you're, you're...
But they have to, but they have to give them money for us to, to finish.
So, so, but what you're, what I'm telling you is, you're, you could have, might as well have added language that said, also, in this sworn statement, you can never, you have to give me a 5% increase and my deputy a 5% increase.
But I didn't do that.
I'm saying, that's the equivalent of what you're doing, though.
I'm just trying to protect the records of the people of Fayette County to get them done. If you're willing, if you're willing to say, hey, Lisa, yeah, we're going to let you spend X amount of dollars, and we're going to bring up the end, and we're going to give you X amount of dollars, so we can get this project done, then we can...
You'd probably have been fine if you left the last two sentences off, you would have been done.
Then we could say, then we could say, okay, you know what, we have this extra money, and yeah, we know we have to pay CSI and we got to do this, but we might have a little extra money to continue to pay.
But, but Lisa, the problem is, during budget, you said, okay.
During budget, the entire time, Jeff, I was saying, I don't like it, I don't want to do it, and in September...
Then I would encourage you, next, next summer, even, even before that, to have a conversation with these folks and say, look, I'm not going to sign this one affidavit this year, okay? And they may have recourse, they may have other options they want to do to, to control their budgets, which they have to do, they have an obligation.
Even in September, I was not at that meeting when they said, hey, this is what we're going to do. I was not at that meeting, and they adopted it, this is what they were going to do.
Were they told, I'm being told a lot of things behind the scenes, I wasn't there. Were they told at any point in time you were on board with it?
I was not on board with it.
Were they told you were? Did you tell them, okay?
I mean, we said in those...
You did, you talked to her that day and then told her to...
I, all I wanted was to, I don't want her to lose her job, so, yeah.
Nobody wants anybody to lose their job.
But I want to get the records done. The records, like, I've got to know the records are getting done.
I, I agree.
I have to know that.
I consider it to be incredibly, I also don't see an avenue of you actually getting it done without these folks.
Because I'll be...
And so now we've created this animosity, now we've created this, this fiscal uncertainty, and you're, you've asked them, you've asked them to essentially adopt a document, I don't think they legally can. I don't think, you're asking them to create a contract with you, that I don't think they can do. I don't think that, you're asking them to commit to giving up future fiscal options as a contract with you, and I don't think they can legally do that.
But I don't even know if I can legally give you a sworn statement if there's not enough money and the records aren't digitized.
This would be nice to know this a long time.
That's, that's why when I came into the budget hearing, I sent out the emails stating, they, all this has to be met in order for us to use that money.
You've had from September to now to...
Mike, I gave it out last year at that meeting, too.
Lisa, you could have talked to us from September to now. You went, you were going to, last month, you were gone. And I don't know what happened in October, we were told since September, you were going to sign this affidavit. This could have been discussed all along the time.
In October, I was at AIC, and Jeff brought the affidavit to the office and dropped it off while I was at conference. Then I had Recorder's Conference.
The same thing happened last year, same exact thing.
I'm just trying to make sure the records get taken care of.
You don't understand, we're not going to, we're not going to accept it with those stipulations in there. You take out the last two sentences, you're probably, we're going home, because you can't handcuff us to what future needs. You can't do that, and we can't, we can't commit to that.
And you have to take it, it's supposed to be for one year.
I mean, you've already said in your first sentence for the 2025 year, that covers you for that year. Am I right, Jeff?
You take off the last two sentences, I think we're okay.
If you're, if you're okay with it, and I take off the last two, but I will not, like, go ahead and at this meeting, if the records aren't done next year, I will not.
Lisa, I think this is the first time you're on record saying, hey, I don't want to do this, and I think it'd be...
On the record.
It is the first time on this record.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think, and they would be, I would look them very in the eye and be very awkwardly looking at them, and next year, they're shocked and appalled that you don't, that you don't want to move forward, okay?
I told them, Jeff, I told them in budget hearings.
I understand that, I understand that, but you're, you've already said, hey, I agreed to it this year. I can't have them approve or, or do anything with, with your, with it as it is with that language. If you take out that language, and then next year, start having early communications, I honestly, I, there's a part of me that thinks you might get even more money in your budget from County General to get this going.
I don't even think there's necessarily need to have a discussion about perpetuation one. You've made it loud and clear what your desires are. I will respect that next year, and it's not like we didn't respect you this year. We're, we're, we're hurt financially, but going into it, if we know that's off limits, that's fine, that's not a problem.
But you knew it was off limits, Matt, Mike, when I gave you my budget and I didn't put it in there. I was telling you, we can't do this.
I wasn't here for your budget hearings, for your budget hearing. But I just know what we've, what we've done with Ruth in the past is just that, I can do this two years, that's it, or I can do this one year and that's it, and that's what we did.
But here we sit, and that's why our records aren't done.
Well, I don't know why they're not done.
No, no, I'm not going to point no fingers, I'm just saying, like, why weren't we taking that money then and paying it to get records done?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
You, you know, it's, it's, in the job that I've done in the past, you know, I've, I've found different ways to do things with software purchases and folk, and I wonder, why didn't you do this this way, if I stayed for so much more money, it would have been more efficient?
Yeah.
Because you're younger, there's some recorders that have been in there, no disrespect to anybody that's served in there, I'm saying, you've got a different look on things sometimes, different technology and so forth, and that's good, we need some of that, but...
I mean, but I did, I did state in meetings, I was like, our records are, they got the vinegar syndrome, like, they're going bad, we really can't afford to do this, we've got to do something.
They're behind terribly bad. We know all that.
I did state that.
We're very, we're...
And after my first budget hearing, I told Scott we couldn't do this.
Where's your document, Jeff?
Excuse me?
Hers is fine, she takes the last couple of months. The, the thing is, I think the problem that we're sitting, is we're now in December, first week of December, and there were, there's a budget passed and expectations, that's, I think that's the critical issue.
You're going to get a statement, I mean, you're going to get a statement, and I'll take the line off, I'm also going to start working with legislation that no other recorder has to deal with this, that records will be taken care of before a dime of that can go to salaries.
Well, you're spending salaries on it, though.
Because I have to.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, I'm just saying, don't, don't say before a dime of that can go to salaries.
Until the county's records are digitized. I mean, I think that's fair, I think all counties need to have their records digitized before we can start spending it on salaries. I think we need to work on reversing what was originally allowed, and we need to clean it up.
Let's just say that we, we have Hurricane Van Helena coming to town here, like, if you didn't, North Carolina. What would be your recommendations, let me get this done, like, in a year or two years? Because no matter which way we go with this, you're facing the same problem, this building burns down, it's the same problem either way.
Yes, you have the same problem either way. The counties that have the money, Hancock County, that's where I'm from, they used ARCA money. Their council members saw the significance, they have a former auditor on council, former assessors, so they were very, very interested in those records, so they pushed very hard to pay for it upfront with ARCA money.
How long will it take Hancock County to get it done?
Oh, gosh, the Fender US Energy, which she's gotten a quote from, came in in a weekend and had it all scanned.
How many years?
That was from 1828 to 1974.
And they've told us that they can do everything that's in that back room in one year. And I think I've already told you guys that.
Phase 1 through 6?
All of it.
Now, that's what's...
Keep in mind, guys, that's just scanning.
Remember, that's just scanning.
That's scanning, so you've now preserved the record. The record is not, there's no threat of it disappearing now, because it's now backed up three, four ways, you're not sure.
Suppose you do the hard copy?
But it's not publicly accessible.
Right, right, it's supposed to be indexed, it's supposed to be validated.
We're, 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 we do the hard copy afterwards, I mean, you don't destroy it, but you...
You cannot destroy it.
Jeff, you have the revised copy, revised...
Environmental control?
Yes, technically, hopefully Debbie can...
If it's stored at a different site, if you just get it out of this building, then you've got, you've got it saved somewhere else.
Well, for future discussions, for, no, I mean, it, it needs to be environmentally controlled.
Safety control, correct?
Safety control.
Hamilton County's room is in, now it's Hamilton County, of course, we know they've got all the money, so...
Yeah, but...
How's Randolph County doing?
Um, you know, I didn't look at Randolph, but Jenny's been there.
She has it stored outside.
Yes.
She does have it stored outside.
Wayne County pretty much jiggled ties at six point.
How would you store it outside?
She is from Wayne County. She's the Wayne County reporter.
You would have to store it, like, there's a company called...
She's on the 1800s.
How much of where our documents used to be?
And why aren't they further along?
I'm sorry?
Why aren't they further along?
They're in 1800s. They're in the 1800s.
They have to be, they have to be.
From present back to...
Yeah, correct.
Is it to better control?
They're, she's from present all the way back to, like, the 1800s in Wayne County. So they're, they're very far along in this process.
They're far along?
Yeah, very far.
You realize Randolph and Wayne County have a solar energy ordinance and they're making hundreds of thousands of dollars off it?
Our problem right now is where they come on, they're in terms of controls.
Yeah.
They are turning the vinegar. So it's likely that all that film will need to be remade. If we do this, we don't need to remake that film because we've got two copies. Because we have the original. And we have what is on our servers. I mean, yes, the Recorder's Association would say microfilm would be, like, their preferred.
Right.
But we have two copies.
The other thing, just for, as a question, if it's off base, let me know. The transfer books, those aren't yours.
Those are, no, those are not, they're technically the auditors, but we keep them. And people use them all the time, so it's gonna be beneficial to them for us to have them available for them. And like I had a gentleman in today, he said, I would rather look in the book.
That revised statement is acceptable to me, I don't know about anybody else, but it is to me.
I agree.
As far as these records, I mean, I get it why it's important. The Recorder's Office fulfills a necessary and an important function in county government.
Yeah, because it's, yes.
So I certainly underste, understand the need to protect these records.
It's very important, we could just, like...
Absolutely, it is. And so, uh, I, you know, we've gotta figure out a way to, how to, how to finance it. But we've gotta figure out how, way, how to finance a lot of different things here. We've got holes everywhere.
Well, and I think the great part about it is, after we get that done, we can pay for salaries. Shoot, we might even bring in enough that we could pay for everybody's salaries in the Recorder's Office.
Well, we'll be available online, correct?
But we've got...
They will be available online, yeah.
But what I'm saying to you is, you know, we, we've got holes everywhere.
We do.
And, and to try to limit wiggle room that we've got is, is not something that I'm willing to go along with personally.
Right. But I, but you have to look at it from my standpoint.
I do.
If the State Board of Accounts were to come down and they say, hey, are all your records digitized? And I say no, are they gonna be like, then why'd you sign that?
I think that's the, that's the sticking point. When she does the sworn statement, she's swearing that she has everything digitized, everything in her perpetuation fund.
That's what it says.
That's not what it says. That's not what it says.
What, the sworn statement?
The sworn statement does not state that at all.
So...
Pardon me?
It should.
That, in legislation, it's supposed to say that.
It states in there, um, can I see it? It states, "To the best of my knowledge at this time, the Recorder's Office technology is presently updated and sufficient to meet the statutory purpose of the fund of the Recorder's Office. And to the best of my knowledge at this time, the fund is sufficient reserves consistent with the plan to capitalize to the next anticipated technology or to upgrade records management necessary to fulfill statutory purpose of the funds." And I had noted in there that we wanted to get deeds digitized.
And that not be worded different to where it does not state that it's, that everything is updated? I mean, instead of saying...
I have to say that, like, the, the way the statute reads. That's, that is the verbatim. In the paperwork. If you remember that perpetuation, like, the slideshow that I had given you, the state, it's in that, 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 they have to affirm that stuff, those statements, whenever. Do you have that done?
And, and honestly, there's enough in that perpetuation fund to cover the first two faces. I mean, you know, over a couple of years period of time, right? And, and everyone on this council is, is well aware of how important it is to get the rest of it done. Now, we're gonna have to figure out a way how to finance that because that's not gonna come from the perpetuation fund.
But where, but where it gets me, it says, "A county recorder may pay all or a portion of the expenses of their county recorder's office for the following calendar year from the fund, only if, one, the county recorder submits to the fiscal body a sworn statement that the current revenue to the fund is sufficient to fulfill the statutory purpose of the fund. The technology of the county recorder's office is presently updated and at a levels to sufficiently meet the statutory purpose of the fund and the recorder's office. The fund has sufficient reserve consistent with recorder's plan to capitalize the next technology or other records management upgrade necessary to fulfill the statutory purpose of the fund and the recorder's office. And the county recorder specifically requests that all or a specific identifiable portion of the fund be used to pay the expenses of the county recorder's office for the following county year and the county fiscal body adopts an ordinance approving the recorder's request under subsection." So essentially, when you adopt the ordinance, you're saying that I, what I have told you is that everything is good, everything's up to date, we've got sufficient money in there.
Does it say, it keeps saying, it keeps referring to the code, that, 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 according to this code? Does the code, does that code section say that it has to be digitized? You see what I'm saying? So I think you're, you're, I think you're fine in your sworn statement. I don't think there's an order from legislation, I don't think we, there's some order out there that says it has to be digitized.
But it, but it has to be preserved.
That's your goal, preserved, for sure. I, I would argue it's preserved right now.
But is it really because, I mean, like, we have records that are, and like, this is, this is...
But, but what I'm saying is, if there's concern about you, this is inaccurate. Or this is, this is not an authentic, I don't, I don't think that, I'm not, there's a code section that says it has to be digitized and you have to have enough money for it to be digitized.
We can't, I mean, clearly, there is a need to improve.
Yes.
Right? But to say that they're not cared for is not...
And I know how far behind we are.
No, they don't, no, they don't.
How can they not?
Because they don't, they don't...
I mean, if we know how all these other counties are doing, then...
I think we have a whole entire year, a whole entire year to work on how we're gonna, how, or at least a handful of months. I think tonight, you, you modified your sworn statement, council's good with it, I approve it. Thank you for that, thank you for being, thank you for listening and being agreeable and, and working through this. I hope there's some type of relationship over the next six months that maybe gets a goal, a real goal, a real game plan in place. Because without these folks' help, I don't know how you have a real great game plan regardless of what happens here.
I have two questions. One, who's creating the online access for the records?
Like, when, when we put documents in, it goes to Docs Pop. And they create an account on Docs Pop. And so if you were to go on and print your deed, and let's say it's eight pages, you're gonna pay the fee and then eight dollars is coming back to the county, to us.
Last question, we talked about preserving, I mean, part of preservation is the hard copies. If you talk to commissioners about doing some of those books, because if I were a recorder, as these books are being digitized, whatever, I would move them offsite.
We, we have, Dale and I have talked that we have stuff that needs to be offsite. Because right now, like, we're supposed to have two copies. Right now, both of our copies are essentially in the recorder's office. And technically, some of them may not even be good copies because they're already vinegar. So we may just have one copy.
But have you talked about environmental control and...
Yes, we have talked about that.
I don't want to keep beating the dead horse.
Yeah.
And, and Adolf Bev is still here. My, my position brings a good job, not to scare the little bejeebers out of you, especially for Christmas, especially for Christmas. But it's to present, here's, here's, you've given us option A, Lisa, here's option B.
But do you under, but do you understand where I'm coming from?
We all, we all understood where you're coming from, Lisa, always.
Because it wasn't, this was not to make you look bad, this was not to make me look bad at this point. This was just to say, hey, like, we've gotta get this done. And like, taking this money is not the way to do it.
And you made it loud and clear, and I'll be your advocate to make sure that it's not done next year. Scott says it needs to be done in two years. I'll say we have to find another way to do it.
We've got to get it done.
Okay, do you wanna take your motion to approve and then redo this?
That might be a record-breaking discussion after a motion, so I think you need to withdraw your motion.
Yeah, withdraw.
Make a motion, if you recall, you made a motion.
What was my motion?
I believe your motion was to...
To not accept the first statement.
Whatever it was, I said, who talks along, make a motion to accept the amended...
Sworn statement.
Sworn statement from our recorder, Lisa Litt.
For the ordinance of number 2024-10. And it's the ordinance approving recorder's request to use the recorder's record perpetuation fund to support 2025 operating expenses.
And what she said.
Does someone want to make a second?
Second.
Okay, are we doing a roll call vote or are we just do it?
Just do a roll call.
Are you good with this, Lisa? We're gonna do it.
And you're hoping, counsel?
Yes, she's good, she's silent.
Roll call vote, Twenta?
Yes.
Riker, Peyton? Patterson?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Beddington?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Cranton?
Yes. And I'm sorry I kept you all so long, but I just felt like we've got, we've had to bring attention to get it to the point that we take it serious.
Had to be discussed.
Yes, it did, and we have to give you enough money to do your job done.
I think, like Jeff said, keep in communication with the, as the project progresses, and let us know.
My quotes are done, so I'll be getting them over to Jane for us to move forward to get a contract for next year.
If, if Lisa, if next year they look at you and say, we thought you were on board with this, I might call them crazy, definitely. You've established your point, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, moving on to proposed ordinance, 2024-13, starting part-time wage ordinance.
Basically, that's just an amended version to go along with the $2 an hour increase approved at the budget time.
Does someone want to make a motion to approve? Do you want me to pass this around first so you can see it, or do you want it?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second. Pass this down, Bob, please.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? So moved. Proposed ordinance 2024-14, starting salary ordinance. That is the ordinance 202014, starting annual salary scale effective January 1st, 2025. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? So moved. And then, uh, the last is proposed ordinance 24-15, 2025 salary ordinance. And this is an ordinance to fix the compensation of current employees per certain to IC 35-2.5-3 to be effective for wages paid after 1/125. Be it ordained by the county council of Fayette County, Indiana, that salaries listed below embody the decision of the Fayette County Council fixing the compensation of current Fayette County employees. After January 1st, 2025, new higher salaries will follow the current starting salary ordinances and be approved by submission of Form 144. Someone want to make a motion for this? Is that the last one on the thing? Yes. Make a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? And our last order of business is Mr. Jim Wolf. I wanted to let you know how much that we appreciate you and all the advice you have helped me with, definitely, becoming the president of the county council. I've bent his ear a lot of times.
I might scare him wrong.
Pardon me?
I said I might scare him wrong.
But I wanted to present you, this board, Fayette County Council, presents you with this just a certificate that says, recognizing Jim Wolf for, for your years of dedication and service to the Fayette County Council Board.
I'll give you a kiss later, Jim. I'll give you a kiss.
You've been shot lately, haven't you?
If someone would like to make a motion to adjourn, you want to say, yeah, go ahead.
I want to thank all of you, working with you, it's been a pleasure. And I've been on here, I think, 12 years or so.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
You've done great.
Yes.
Bob, you missed signing one of these. You can sign one. Top one.
The top one.
Top one needs a cigarette.
Today?
No, then they...
We haven't adjourned yet, if you can... They could approve it.
Dale, Dale was trying to hurry up. So we got to do this ten day thing.
Oh, who is an additional, it was too late. Additionals happened down by the 15th of the month last night.
It was on the first meeting.
Yeah, we talked about this before, didn't we? Last one.
Well, we adjourned earlier.
Did we talk about this last one?
I did with the commissioners.
I know an additional wasn't advertised for, for this meeting. So, so if it was, if it was a transfer, taking it through, it doesn't have to be advertised. So was, did you, did you say you were transferring, or you was? Sorry, I'm confused now.
For my, for my sparring neutering pension up, we, we use the donation of 4102 to create for the, over there for, for my veterinarian bill. I'll ask them another 5,000 to finish up this year for that. Then I would ask them another 2585 to buy gravy shots to do a shot standing up there out of the donation. Just go to, like, supply and get that taken care of.
I don't know what happened to the form, I'm sorry, I, I don't know. It, it wasn't advertised, so it can't, we can't do an additional for this one.
Is there any, is there any room on a transfer? No?
There's nothing, there's no lines to transfer from, like, all the, all the budgeted amounts have been spent out.
Merry Christmas, Rod.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
In meetings, you know, so let's get it done, and we, we both looked at Dale and said, we gotta do the 10, 10 day advertising. I was last month.
Does it have to be done in a spot?
I didn't, I didn't pay bills.
If it was at a commission meeting, I mean, the commission meeting would have been on the 19th and the deadline to advertise was the 50th, so we were already past.
I think, I mean, I knew, I think I did it earlier than that, didn't I?
Well, you're saying you talked about it at a meeting, the two meetings were the 6th and the 19th.
Yeah. I think I did it on the 6th, I mean...
The form didn't get to me and I didn't advertise it, so, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know what to tell you other than...
It's suggested, but we could hold another meeting.
I'm sorry?
We could hold, hold another meeting. As much as everybody wants to do it, I'm sure.
How many, uh, how many days of advertising do we need?
Ten.
Ten?
Yeah.
It'd be very quick and, you know.
How do you owe, need to pay?
My veterinarian's.
This time you want to play them light?
Well, they've been, they've been a hope a little bit. We have to hold another meeting, it's going Jane's office, it's a side paper.
President?
It's have to be public.
Okay, you, you have some unexpended items in your county general budget that we can move around and you can pay it out of county general. I mean, I know typically, you have a veterinarian charges lying in county general, which there's money there, there's like 1,400 in that right now, but you've got...
Oh, more than that.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you've got money, you've still got 2,000 of workers comp, we won't be paying any more insurance before the end of the year. You've got 3,000 in gas, oil and diesel, 1,000 in...
I'll, I'll work, I'll come see you, see what...
Yeah, 1,000 in dog and cat food, I mean, you've got it.
Yeah.
We can move money around.
Do we need to do that tonight with the transfer, or can you guys hand out?
That's a three to a three, yeah.
So do they need, are we needed for that?
No, you, you would only have to approve if it was moving, like, from a two to a three.
Okay. So that can be done on your, on you guys...
You, you got $6,200 in 3,000 lines. Is that gonna be enough to transfer around between those lines?
That'll, that'll help on the, on veterinarian bills. I guess I'll try to do the shop that again next month, I guess.
Okay, so you're gonna move that around?
Yes. Can you get with me and move that? Um, you can't do additional preparations in January, though, so you can't, you can't do an additional until February. So, I mean, you'll have your new budget for county general, but you can't do anything with the donation fund.
All right.
Everybody have a Merry Christmas and thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yep, just let me get it out, come on, guys. Someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
Second?
All in favor?
No, Bob, that's all right, that's all right.
Adjourn. Adjourn.
Thanks.